I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, May 6, 2013 at 7:30. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adoption of agenda. Any additions or deletions? I would like to remove letter E and just refer to that as an informational packet, which I'll explain to you under my comments. That's a 2013 tried insurance services renewal proposal. Any other additions or deletions?
I would like to remove the planning commission and zoning board of appeals training session until we get some more information on that.
I just have one question. What else are we waiting for on that?
Patrick was supposed to come back with actual cost.
Jeanette, did you discuss cost with Patrick? No? Okay. I thought we had something on that that referred to cost. That's fine.
Sorry, let's remove it from the agenda until, so we don't have to keep looking at it every month, until we actually have something to talk about.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, removing 19B and 20E.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Public comments. Any public comments at this time? No public comments. Approval minutes, 4:1, 2013.
There's been three adjustments since these were handed out. On the last page, all three of them. Public comments was 21. Adjournment should be 22, not 23, so that has been corrected. And the meeting did not get over at 11:10. It got over at 8:27, so that is also being corrected.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Mid-month business. There's no mid-month business at this time. Shares report. I still have not received the latest shares report. Jeanette, did you just check prior to coming in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Fire department report. Chief?
Evening, Ron.
Evening.
Everybody. Just one thing. I've submitted a normal monthly update and run report. I just want to make one comment, and it's a big thank you. Last month, we held our annual MioShin Required Trench Rescue Training, which was a week ago Saturday. And I want to publicly thank Ottenbacher Farms, specifically Kyle and Mark Ottenbacher, for providing the backbone and manpower to come down and cut the trench for us that Thursday evening. Mark could come down. Unfortunately, the trench did collapse, so it was about as real as it possibly could get. And we also, this included our department, as well as six members from Richmond, Lenox. And also this year, we had the chief of trauma from McLaren-McComb Hospital, Dr. Patel is his name, came out to observe, and he was just amazed at what we do and how we do it. And he actually wants Jeff and I to come in and do a short class for his trauma surgeon team on what they could encounter once we bring a patient to the hospital. So it was a great, great joint venture and was highly successful. It was a very long day because of the situations we dealt with. But I just wanted to, again, thank the Ottenbacher family, especially Kyle and Mark, for doing that for us. Everything else is covered in my report and then new purchase under new business. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. EMS report. Mr. White isn't here.
Good evening. Everyone should have a copy of my report for the month. There's nothing really unusual or nothing new on it. I'd ask to receive and file at this time unless somebody has any questions on a particular
Any at this time?
Hey, Cam, what's, when I talked to you when the sidewalk went in, have we done the side fill, sidewalk for the shares?
Yeah, when it came up, the original quote, you know, it was kind of the gray area about the culvert and all that. Was able to go back to that contractor and get the culvert and was able to get some stone at no additional cost. So the additional work per se didn't cost us anything further, but as far as backfilling the sidewalk, that price was not included in there. And as luck would have it, it hasn't stopped raining since they put that thing in until just a few days ago. So it made no sense to put any topsoil in there and have it just wash away. So it's kind of on my to-do list, like everything else, because of the weather right now. So we're looking to get at that pretty shortly, so we can get some grass growing and get it stabilized.
Any questions? Thank you.
No problem.
Code enforcement report.
File, I have the Michigan Water Control Commission forums from Shannon.
Okay. No questions? Engineers report.
Unless there are any questions, I'd ask for receiving file.
Thank you. Any questions for Sir Med at this time? Library report.
Proceeding filed. And just a note that beginning on Saturday, May 18th, and ending Friday, September 7th, the library will observe their summer hours and they will not be open on Saturdays.
Thank you. Supervisory report. I'd like to take this opportunity for three things, actually. First, update on the HUJ group that is still going forward. They're just trying to work out a couple, couple things with their financing at this time. And the county is also involved with them. Hopefully, I'll have another meeting with them in the next two weeks to see where they're at and coordinate that with Sir Med Safe, to see about bringing them in front of the board. That's where that stands at this time. Second, the Trident renewal packet that's in your, in your, I've got in your mailboxes, that's basically if anybody has any other questions prior to this or any other suggestions. Due to no lawsuits, everything should remain the same, except, I believe, for the cost of automotive. Jeanette, they said that which is a slight increase. Everything else is to remain the same because there's been no claims. So if anybody has any questions on review, we can contact Mr. Weber. Just write them down, get them over to me, and we'll make sure that he addresses them prior to, I believe it's July 1st, or July 7th renewal, I want to, no, we take that back. July 1st renewal, 2013. And then I'd like to take this moment under my department to let Luanne Cannel, our senior coordinator, just take a minute, see what you have something you wanted to talk about real quick? Sure. Thank you, Luanne.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking you for giving me the opportunity to work with the seniors. I'm really enjoying myself here and we're having a ball. Ezra, where I also work with the senior program director, as the senior program director at Ray Township and have a close working relationship with Debbie Williams of Richmond Township. I believe that these relationships benefit all three communities as it gives us an opportunity to offer programs that may not be available to smaller groups. It gives us a chance to share the uniqueness of each community and it allows seniors to expand their horizons. During the past six weeks, the seniors have had baseball opening day. That was a celebration complete with peanuts and Cracker Jacks. We had a real good time. We celebrated birthdays. We participated in a craft day and we also attended senior prom. There's several outings and activities I have scheduled over the summer. During our regular meeting on the 22nd of May, Karen from the Lenox Township Library will be visiting us to reintroduce the group to the offerings of the library and to offer library cards, sign up for the group. On May 23rd, we're taking a Smart Shuttle bus on a surprise launch trip. That's the seniors from the Lenox Center only. On June 14th, we have a free trip to the Detroit Institute of Arts and transportation is provided by the Detroit Institute of Arts. June 20th, we're going to have a great event here. It's called the Let's Get Acquainted Picnic. We're having the Smart Bus go to Ray Township in Richmond Township and shuttle all seniors from both groups here to the Lenox Township Park where we will have potluck. And the three groups will be sharing the cost of the paper products, beverages, and hot dogs and hamburgers. And Chris is actually going to cook for us that day. So we're going to have lots of fun outside, have some games and things. And then on the 21st of June, we're going to attend the senior fair that's being held at the Gibraltar Trade Center. Again, we're going to be using the Smart Buses for transportation for that event. I've also requested through the Detroit Tiger Foundation, a block of 50 tickets that they give free to organizations. I haven't heard of an outcome of that yet, so we're still waiting. While it's my intention to use Smart Shelves whenever possible, there are occasional trips that are beyond the parameters of the shuttles or we have more participants than the shuttles can accommodate. I'd like to ask the board to set up a brainstorming session at which we could discuss possible funding solutions for those times. I'll make myself available at the discretion of the board. Whenever you want to meet, I will be happy to meet and possibly discuss how we can accommodate those two times that we do have those other trips. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Real quick, do you have an approximate number on those type of trips that would need special financing?
Sure. Right now, I have like 10 trips scheduled between now and the end of August, and I believe there's only three of them that would be chartered. One of them is a Christmas in July trip that we're taking to Frankenmoo to tour Browners and then to have lunch in Frankenmoo.
Okay. So what we need to come up with is a special meeting date. When would be your first? Probably as soon as possible because you're going to want to book these, especially if the baseball's involved.
I actually already have all of those items booked. It's just a question as to whether or not I can offer them to the seniors here.
Okay.
Because I don't want to offer something that everybody else is getting for free and telling them that they have to pay for.
Correct. So the sooner we can book a special meeting to address this issue, the better for you to take care of this.
Would the charter bus be for the three community groups?
Yes.
Okay, so they would all share?
We share the cost. And actually, the way that we figure that out is divide the number of passengers by total cost of the bus and then you're charged a per head fee by how many people signed up for community.
I think that's very fair.
And I'd be more than happy to show you the quarters that I use to reconcile those accounts and all that kind of information that you need.
Does anybody have any ideas on a meeting time?
Luanne, did you want to try to do it when you're here, say, on a Wednesday or a Thursday?
Sure. The only day that would be difficult is Tuesday because that's my day at Ray Township. Any other day, I can make myself available.
Do you have an approximate? I mean, based on, let's just say, for example, if there's three communities involved, a one-third sharing type event, do you have any idea of cost per shuttle?
I can tell you that one of the trips we took recently was 550 out. That's for a 55 passenger bus. So if we fill the bus, it's $10 per head. And then we just bill that back to whatever community, whoever signed up from each community.
How does it work in Ray Township? Do you just have a set amount of money that's in your budget?
In Ray Township, they actually use their Smart Funds. And there's $3,000 of Smart Funds that I'm allowed to use for transportation each year.
We already utilize our Smart Funds, so that's not an option for us.
Well, basically, you're giving $3,000 for transportation?
Correct.
Per year for your seniors? And did you, you've already been through one year of this. Did you, do you generally use the whole 3,000?
Pretty close. I think there was $180 left over last year. And the way they work it is they allow you to carry it over for an additional year. So that just got put into this year's amount.
Then again, also too, this would be a shared event where they wouldn't be footing the full cost for possibly an event they would have taken. So, for example, on a 550, less than 200 bucks a community, for a three event situation, we could be looking at approximately 600 bucks a community. If you guys want to authorize something like that, gets it right out of the way for, if that's, that works. If it's a little overshared, come back to us and it solves the problem right out of the gate.
And that's something that we can put into the budget. You know, it should be a budget I don't, under the senior center. If we were to do something like that.
Luanne, do you think you could secure 200 bucks from each other community for each event, possibly, if we did 600 upfront?
So you're saying do the 600 and then once she's done with that, just come back in front of the board and ask for more again? I'm thinking if we're going to put it in the budget, why not budget an amount closer to maybe 1,500? And I don't know whether we would need to carry it over, but you have 1,500.
That's fine by me.
If you use it, that's good. If you don't, then it just comes back in and next year we do another, another amount.
My concern is just getting these taken care of for. That's fine by me. If you want to do 1,500 letters, letters?
Yeah, that's what I said. I was thinking, I was in the $1,000 range is what I was thinking to my head, but so 1,500 wouldn't be able. And if you don't use it, it goes away. If you do use it, then you use it.
It still goes away.
Yeah. It still goes away.
Does that sound like a good idea? We're talking next year.
Yes, yes.
I'm going to make that motion that I won't have to do a meeting.
I'll make a motion that we budget 1,500 dollars for transportation for the senior centers?
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. Any other discussion or questions?
And I think it's real important, we discussed this year in the interviews, that especially since this is shared, that we do get paperwork, even if it's quarterly, on how it's divided up. So then, when you come back next year, there's zero questions, and I'm sure there won't be any questions.
I can give you paperwork after every trip because I fill it out for the other communities after every trip that reconciles how much, who went, where they were from, and how much was charged where.
Perfect. Okay, any other questions or discussion?
Oh, I just, thank you for coming. It's neat to hear all the things you're doing.
Thank you very much.
I pop in there quite regularly and talk to the seniors once she's not around and I hear nothing but good things from the seniors. And like I said last month, that's the best gauge. It's the best gauge is talk to the seniors because they're going to tell you flat out if they're happy or not. There's no question about it.
Ron, I have a question for you on the Trident thing.
Okay. We got to finish the motion.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry. No, I thought we did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. We're all set. Thank you very much. I appreciate your efforts. Any questions regarding the Trident thing? What I can tell you at this time is, please put any questions in writing and we're going to submit to Mr. Weber on everything.
Oh, I was just wondering. It might be something you know off the hand. Are they taking into consideration like the depreciation on the vehicles as far as?
Couldn't answer that. All's I was told was that there was a rise in auto. I believe that's what was said, Jeanette, across the board. So that's all I was told at this time, but the good news was that there should not be very much of an increase at all because of no events that have taken place.
Okay, thanks.
Well, sure.
Well, one thing that may have changed, and I don't know, Jody, is it still 11 full-time employees? Is that what we have?
You know, I saw that and it's like, I'll be damned, but it's close to that.
Okay, thank you. Treasuries report.
Do you want to go back to Jeff or Jeff's?
I'll, I'm.
I didn't have anything else in mind. I emailed the board already.
Okay.
No questions on any other.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions for Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You okay? You look present.
He? Oh, no, fine.
Well, he said there are any questions for Jeff. Yeah, I do.
Okay. Treasuries report.
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries.
In doing the bills, the one to McComb County for the chloride was only for one application and it needed to be two, so that was added for a new total of $388,108.92.
Beat that total one more time, please.
3,000, 388,108.92.
Thank you.
While we're on the treasurer's section, I just want to let everybody know that we, April 4th or 7th, we took our stuff down to the county. Not heard back from them that anything was wrong, so we're hoping to hear any day that settlement is. But we're finished. Good feeling.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the orders and bills with a total of $388,108.92.
Support. Thank you. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Deputy clerk Brokaw, please.
Churchy.
Aye.
Boyd.
Aye.
Ottenbacher.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Trump.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Trustee Churchy.
Two short things. First, I want to congratulate chief and Grandma Fouchet on their new granddaughter.
Thank you very much.
My other item is recently, we lost a Lenox Township family member, Carl Odoman. I met Carl when I was building my house back in 1988. He came out to do some of the inspections and he was very cordial and very helpful. I mean, he didn't just come in and do my rough inspection. He went around with me and gave me pointers of things to do. So I just want everybody to keep good thoughts about Carl. He's, he was a good guy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd?
A couple things. The policy manual, we are done with that. I want to thank Carol, Carol, Nancy, and Jeanette for all their help on that. I do need to get with Jeanette. There's a couple of small changes that were missed and we will have something to the board this week, I'm sure. It's just a matter of, I meant to get with you today, Jeanette, just never did. I was just going over all this stuff. It's just a couple little tiny things that need to be done. So we should have something for the board here within the next week, so we should be able to be done by, by next meeting. But they were very, very helpful. They were just fantastic working with it. And then I wanted to thank Jeff White. When I found out that CPR classes hadn't been taught here since we were in the old building, I asked Jeff about it and his usual first answer was, tell me when to be there and I'll have a crew and, Jeanette, or, I'm sorry. Katie was here and everybody said she did a fantastic job. There was an issue with the AED. I made a phone call to Jeff and he had everything ordered and it's up and running again and back in place. So thank you for all that, Jeff. And then I do have a question. I don't know who it would be addressed to, but I was talking to Danny the other day and it came up, the property. I'm just really curious about the property sale behind the fire hall. Who's looking into that? I know it was brought up several months ago and I just don't know who, who looks into that. I know that it's township property, so it's out of Danny's hands as far as selling it. So I think that something needs to be done by the board. And I just, I know that it's fallen by the wayside and why not sell the property if we can? So I'm just kind of curious what's going on with that, how we address that.
I haven't heard any more on it since our initial email that came in.
I, Mr. Petrowski called me a second time and I recommended that he send a letter to the entire board about his interest. Ron had asked me to talk to the assessing department to get a ballpark figure about what the, what the property is worth, which we did through Lisa. And so that's really where it stands. So I don't know if Mr. Petrowski has, had sent that letter or not. And we have a ballpark figure of what, what the property is worth through assessing, through sales of other properties in Township. So I'm all for it, but like I said, I haven't heard anything bad from him at all.
Oh, if that property is sold, would it, would the funds go into the fire department or the general fund? How, I mean, how was the property purchased? Was it through the fire department?
I'm pretty sure that that was purchased through the fire department like that, and so it would go back to the fire department.
Is that correct, Eddie?
That's my recollection also.
We'd have to check into that, though, to make sure. My, my only concern at this time is, once that property's gone, it's gone. For future expansion or anything, it's, it's already there, it's already paid for, correct?
Yes.
And it's not high market value yet. We're still coming out of a low market end. I would say to, to sell it at a loss during low market time, now's the time to purchase property versus selling, in, in, being in the business. So that would be my concern, to take a loss on that property at this time.
Isn't that, and I'm not real familiar with it, isn't that property pretty much landlocked? I mean, it's pretty much, he buys it or we keep it?
Yeah, it is, it is landlocked. And we had paid $10,000 acre for 12 years ago and now Lisa said it's approximately worth right now.
So we probably wouldn't really take the loss.
Yeah, she said right about $10,000 to $12,000, so it's close to a break-in.
Yeah, I can't see anybody else being interested in purchasing it and I can't see any reason for an expansion there.
That's just... That's just the back five acres.
Right.
And we've got, I believe it's eleven and a half there, it's either eleven and a half or thirteen and a half acres there, so we still would have a very large chunk of property.
So if we needed to expand, you still have enough, though?
Oh, yeah.
Well, my only other thought on this is, we have an EMS station that's very much out of date and very small across the street, and, we can't do anything really on site because the property's too small there, right?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, the EMS station exists, only sits on a acre of property there, so there, there would be no expansion ability on that piece of property, I don't think, even if we, even if we, if we will raise that current building, I'm not sure if we could, would be allowed to put something back on the site or not.
Just a couple things I'd like to bring up, that's...
Are, are you, Jeff, are you at all looking at tearing that down and building a, a new one?
Today, as we stand here, there is nothing in our six-year capital improvement plan that calls for a new building. Six years goes by pretty fast, however, and we are in a building that was stick-built almost forty years ago, and has had a couple of add-ons to make it its kinda U-shape that exists today.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say forty?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, I think the day will come when we'll need to look at, at whether it makes sense to keep an older building up, or whether it makes sense to look at something new. Having said that, if we were gonna replace that building, we'd probably be looking at something that's eight or, eight or ten thousand square feet, we've got about six thousand square feet where we exist today, so we'd probably go to probably at least eight thousand. And, you know, I would guesstimate that would be about a million dollars. All that said, the EMS doesn't have a million dollars anywhere in its budget, you know, today to do that kind of work, so, in answer to your question, you know, ten years from now, certainly is something that I think we need to, as, as, as head of the organization and boards, have in the back of our mind, absolutely. Do we intend to, you know, expand, or do, will you see anything, you know, in, in this term or your next terms even, on the board, in my budget? Probably doubtful unless we have a big windfall of money.
I do have a question for attorney Joppa, too. On that, would that require a licensed appraisal, and would that have to be open for everyone in the market, or could it be a, a direct sale to one individual right out of the gate?
Well, am I, am I out?
Yes, I'm, yes, you're right.
Well, answering the, the second part first, it, it would be appropriate, what the key is, is that the township has to make sure that it gets fair value.
Fair market value.
And you have to determine what that would be. The best course of action, the best practice is to get an appraisal. We do have assessors in the township that work with the township and have the ability to give you some idea of the value, you could start there, see what that indicates, see if a reasonable value can be determined in that fashion. If, sometimes it's a judgment call based on the value of the property, if it's a piece of property that isn't worth much, it may not be worth a full appraisal, which costs a significant amount of money, but if the property has significant value, you make a judgment call on whether or not to proceed to the appraisal stage.
Discretion on the board?
Yes, it wouldn't be in the discretion of the board, you just have to make sure you're giving a reasonable value and comfortable with that, as, as a group of five voting in that manner. The, the other part of your question is, essentially, is the township required to request proposals and put it out to the public to receive proposals on the property? Again, that is in the board's discretion, there's no law that requires that to happen, but that is a method also to ensure that you're getting a reasonable, fair value for the property as the market determines, and proposals, of course, are a good indicator of the market in some instances, depends on a number of factors, however. There may also be some desire in the board, not being personally familiar with this piece of property, there might be issues where the board has concerns about ultimate use of the property, and you could work that into and make that part of your proposal, your request of proposals as well.
Require indeed restrictions?
If that's the board's desire, yes, that's the way to do it, and that's a way to put it out there so that...
Safeguard.
You can safeguard against that, you could also inquire with, as part of the proposal process, of what their use of the property is going to be, so you know what the use is going to be, and that can be part of it as well. The more restrictions you put on the property, however, in the proposals...
Less value.
Your value will pump out, you're taking some value out of the property, the more you restrict it.
Now, with this particular person being, there wouldn't be any road fromage to give a, to go with the sale, going out for proposals might not be the right thing because there's only really the person that owns behind that would be able to report it, not me asking.
Well, again, it's a judgment call, and that may be a valid basis for the board to conclude that this property isn't really marketable to the general public, and that a jointing property owner might be the best and most appropriate user for the property. And again, as long as you're getting fair, fair value, in that instance, since you do have a captured market, might be a good idea to, to go to an appraisal, just to ensure that you are getting a reasonable value from that jointing property.
And then the property goes back to the tax office.
Say, my, my, my concern is this may be a once-in-a-lifetime, I mean, because of the fact that it's landlocked, we have two choices, like I said, either the guy that owns the farm buys it or we keep it. I mean, that's, that's really our only two options with a piece of property, and I know that the chief's budget was kinda hit with the tax revenues, and he lost some of his budget money, and that'll help make some of that up, it's really kinda on good timing.
This is one of those, I think, if, if the resident is interested and he comes forward and he makes an offer of some sort, we can look at it at that point and say, is it worth getting rid of at this point, or is it worth saving to see what happens, you know, in the future of the township? So, you know, right now, until he comes up with an offer of some sort, it's neither him or there.
Danny, you said you asked him to send something to the supervisor's office?
I asked him to send a board, the entire board a letter after he called me the second time, and you haven't received a letter from him?
Not that I recall.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know if we received, did we receive anything, Jeanette? I know it's from Danny, we got something, but, have to check, but...
So he probably hasn't gone in pursuit of it any further.
Maybe if you talk to him again, let him know, know how we feel, if he can come here or send something, we can get the ball rolling, you know, one way or the other.
Okay.
I, just, to voice my opinion, I'm certainly not in favor of selling it for less than what we paid for, I think that would be a mistake, but if you want the chief to request a offer from the gentleman, I have no problem looking at an offer from him. For clarification purposes, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, just so we can see, decide one way or another what we're gonna do, just 'cause it's out there, we might as well look at it and see if we can make it happen, if we wanna make it happen.
Okay.
So you're gonna contact him, then?
No, I'll, I'll follow up then.
Okay.
To see if, it's, it's not prevailing, and, and her husband.
Would you, attorney Joppa, would you just suggest like a simple letter of intent first, or would you like a purchase agreement?
Yeah, I, you know, a letter of intent is all well and good, but really, you, you go straight to the purchase agreement is, is the, you're gonna say...
All terms and conditions listed.
Yes, you're gonna say about some expense that, right, or the letter of intent is, is
Okay.
felt suspected.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I have a question on where the parking wreck committee stands right now.
Cam sent me an overview of the path, and unfortunately, I was pretty sick for a while, I was out for over a week, so really didn't go anywhere with it, but I think we just, we need to call another meeting, decide, I mean, it's that timing to decide what we're gonna do. One of the things that Cam mentioned, we, we had quite a discussion one day, stopped at, at my desk, and we talked for a while, one, one of the options that hadn't come up before was doing coal patch, and I, I had no idea if that's feasible or not, but it's just one more thing to throw out there, so it's really a matter of looking at not only options, but money, where are we gonna get it from?
How, how many meetings we had, again?
Two? Three? Three.
Three meetings?
I've talked to Shemad a couple times and, and Cam.
My only concern is this is getting a lot of use now, and we're getting into summer, and before we know it, it'll be gone.
I'm, I'm almost thinking the coal patch, it might be the way to go, it's gonna be the most expensive, or inexpensive and quickest, and, now, my concern is where are we gonna come up with this money from, because we are talking a lot of money, even if we do, we don't go with the port state, it's still an awful lot of money.
I, I can tell you this, in my opinion, and I'll address the board on this, we have no choice but to take care of it, it's an unsafe situation, that is existing out there, we have no choice but to fix it, take it from our, our general fund and, and make it happen.
I, before someone gives... If you're gonna do that, I would, I would probably recommend the coal patch, because it's gonna be quickest and cheapest for now, and then we can look at different options. I just hate to throw a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out there and just say, here, do it, when we may not have to do that.
But I...
Maybe grant money out there. And it's not gonna happen this year, the grant money, and I know that, the grant money is not...
That was said right from the get-go.
Yep, and I agree with that, I understand that, but it's still an awful lot of money, a lot of taxpayer money, and the coal patch may be a very viable option.
Well, it's...
Expensive.
My suggestion would be, we have an engineer, and I would like his recommendation in writing on how to take care of the problem the best, most economical way, so that we get life out of it, that we're not revisiting this every year, and we can positively say we addressed the problem that we had out there. I'd like to see a recommendation for, from Shemad on that, that's his specialty and that's what we paying for.
There's been billing from the engineer for looking at the path, so, we have already...
Do you want his recommendation?
Have you already made a recommendation?
And that's where we're looking for grant bonds.
Right, right, right. And we were too late this summer, and the, the summer grants are gone, they're out, they're out there already.
Good.
Please, Shemad.
Some of that time spent was a lot of initial research of what options are the...
Hold it mine up, would you, Shemad?
What options are, are best for this application, but, we made a plan for bidding purposes, Cam has that, that was the last thing that I submitted, I believe the board members saw that in the... So, right, right now, we recommended an, a complete replacement of the asphalt section, and that's gonna give us another fourteen, twelve, fourteen years.
Without touching it?
Yes. That's what we did before. You don't have a lot of traffic on, on the pathway, that's why it's extended about twelve years. The trucks, the, the cracks on the, the lung studal cracks, that's just normal because of the weights.
Sure.
I mean, it's a very economic section that we, we put twelve years ago, it's only two inches over four inches of aggregate.
So what, what you're saying right now, the life is zero?
Life is zero.
Now, when we talked, you said that most of the path was in fine shape, but the sections that are bad are very bad.
After we, we started talking about the total replacement, and we looked at maybe an overlay, maybe taking off the asphalt and putting out a new layer, Cam contacted a local contractor, he just came and visited the, the site, looked at the pathway, and there's a lot of spots that we could, we could save by doing an overlay, but other spots, we need to make a, a bigger section so it doesn't crack as fast. So, if we do that, and that's the latest proposal that we have, if we do that, we may gain a little bit more, few, few years more than what was designed, originally designed for it.
And I don't recall, was, was there, did he give a price on that?
No. The original price, I believe, Cam, you said that to Chris or not, maybe not, the original quote was about two years ago, was the total replacement of the, just the asphalt section, actually, it was an overlay, correct?
That's correct.
It was just an overlay, another inch of overlay.
You know, we might as well get into this right now, too, and one of the talks also was the restrooms, and doing this conjunction with the restroom, and getting it done once and for all, and getting rid of these temporary porta-potties, I mean, this is something that keep putting off, putting off, putting off, and we've gotten numerous complaints every year for park use, we have people that are residents that are not using it, just because of that reason, and that was one of the regrets that I heard out in the community, that I'm not bringing my family up here with porta-potties and...
I, I don't think the committee that's got together has any qualms about that, I believe, and, and that's not the problem, the problem is where do we come up with this money?
That's the thing, it's all well and good that, yeah, it needs to be replaced, but we don't have...
And the thing is, if we, if we can make this path last one more year by doing coal patch or whatever, we can start waiting grants now for the coming summer, these are my thoughts on it, and why use, if we're gonna throw the building in there, too, half a million dollars of taxpayer money when we can get half a million dollars of grants? To me, that's just, I can't comprehend that, I just, I don't understand why we don't patch it, make it usable, make it safe, get another year out of it while we wait these grants. Is that a little bit of a gamble? It is, because there's no guarantee on grants, but with the park that we have, the building that we have, from everybody that I've talked to, we have a pretty good chance of getting grants, because it's a green building, we're very conscientious of, of the environment, we really have a good chance of getting these grants, so, I don't know, unless somebody has an idea where this money's gonna come from, that's my concern, now, I think that's what's, what's holding everything back. Is coal patch a feasible option?
Coal patch is gonna be very temporary thing.
Right.
You know, once we got into some decent weather and we got back out there, you know, I got some, some shear points that have really opened up this past winter, and I, I just, I wanna get those filled to, to get rid of a hazard. You know, it's not gonna look great by no means, but at least it's gonna get rid of, you know, the half-inch gap that's in the existing pavement right now, and that's, that's what I meant by, you know, it, it's just a patch, it's, it's really not a fix.
I, I agree, but it might buy us a year to go after this money.
Right, a couple years ago, when we kinda first started, you know, getting into this, you know, I had the con, this local contractor that's done work for us in the past, you know, he's not only a local resident, but he's a business owner, he does really, he's always done great work for us at a reasonable cost, so I really value his opinion, and that's why I've had him out here. Originally, we were looking at just an overlay, and memory serves me right, roughly two years ago, I think he gave us a quote of thirty-nine, forty thousand dollars just for an overlay. That was no, you know, reinforcing any areas that were fatigued or, or tear out, just an overlay. Now, since then, you know, fuel prices and everything have still risen, so those costs, I'm sure, have changed dramatically. When I had him back out here recently and revisited, you know, we talked about the large stretches that are still in somewhat good shape, it'd be a shame to just rip that out and just replace it, and that's when we started looking at, you know, maybe we need to just build up those areas that have, that have given, that have fatigued out, to reinforce those areas, overlay the complete thing, that way everything looks uniform, there's really no reason, we should be able to get some really good years out of it for minimal cost. Now, you're still gonna get, because of the climate, you're still gonna get shift and change, you know, like Shemad had alluded to, to cracking on the edges, you, that's just normal, you're gonna get that, there's no way, it's not the trucks, it's, it's the climate. You know, you're going from, you know, probably a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty degrees during the summer to, you know, minus twenty, thirty in the, in the winter, that's a big, that's a big barrier, you know, a lot of things expand and contract and move, so you're gonna get some of that shearing, you're gonna get some of the cracking, but as far as just some of the areas that are fatigued, you know, from other things that we've done since that path was put in, not just from traffic or because we shed water across it, or this or that and the other, but, you know, not only the path or permanent restrooms, I mean, we still, we got some ditching to take care of, too, so we can keep moving the water through the site. The site is mature, unfortunately, it's time to spend money to keep it going, you know, I know we, you know, we're under budget constraints, and we're trying to find money for this, that and the other, but the longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost us.
And I, I'd love to comment on that, too. One of the things of the parking wreck committee, I thought, was to look at everything as a whole, the pathway, the restroom, concession stand, and the ditching issues, where everything would be coordinated so that each one wouldn't affect the construction or the other.
If possible.
If possible. I keep hearing the talk, once again, on where's the money gonna come from? I don't know if you checked, but we do have reserves, we have a large sum of reserves, so there is money there if somebody wants to do it.
If we had to spend the money, that's fine, there's grant money out there, so why spend half a million dollars, you know, half a million dollars if we don't have to, that's, that's what I'm struggling with.
And next year, if we don't get the grant?
Then we have no choice.
So next year's...
We've covered our options, and we, we've tried, we've tried to make, to get the money, now we know we're not going to, then it makes more sense. I agree, something needs to be done, I don't think we need to just throw taxpayer money at it all willy-nilly when we have other options.
The question is...
The question is, if we develop a litigation, the board wants me to go up to it this time.
I understand.
Without wasting more time and more money.
Exactly. First off, it's, it wouldn't be willy-nilly. We're going off the recommendation of an engineer, looking at what we have already built.
I didn't mean by the recommendation, I mean, we have other options. There is grant money out there. It's there, it is, it is available.
That was looked at this year by you.
That wasn't looked at this year.
You said you were looking into it this year.
And, and we were too late, the grants were done. Deadlines were already passed when we started looking into this.
Right.
So our only, yeah.
It was first summer.
Yeah, it was, it was just too fast.
Actually, that was sent right out of the get-go.
At this point in time, though, we don't need to rush into tearing the park apart, because we wanna do it right the first time. There's ground stuff that needs to be done, is what I'm hearing. Still haven't, there isn't a decision on, on the park, like the bathroom and all that. Nobody knows exactly. There's a bunch of different ideas out there, I've got quite a few, I've got a, I've got a few. I hate to rush into something just to spend the money and get it built, instead of doing it from. And if it takes us a year, you can do the cold patch or whatever, and get another year out of it for this year, because we're already, you know, into May.
The path needs repairs, no questions on that. If, if the board decide that only a temporary repair should be done at this time, cold patch would be an option.
I guess what I'm saying, my, my thing is, it's not shovel-ready tomorrow. We're not ready to be shovel-ready tomorrow. And with that said, the time it takes to get shovel-ready, you're already halfway through the season.
Yeah, the plans are done and ready for bids.
Now, it's the only two options we need. We need, uh, we need a contractor and we need funds. And so we can hold this project up.
You have to do the building and all that, too?
No, I'm just talking about the path.
What I'm saying, if we're gonna do it, do it right that first time. If, take the time to get it planned out correctly, so that next season, we're shovel-ready now in May.
Now, to answer Ron's question about recommendation, always, my recommendation was to remove that asphalt, existing asphalt, and overlay it with a fresh new layer. And that's, that's what was originally proposed.
I, I would say it's probably the best way to ensure consistency throughout the path, correct?
That's, that's the only way to get the same life expectancy of, of the new path. I mean, we're saving by not replacing the aggregate section, while we're replacing the asphalt. But still, this is an eight-foot wide, about a mile long pathway that we're looking at. That's why the, the cost is, is higher.
I agree with Jody and Chris. I think we should patch it to the best of our ability this year again, and go all gun hole, applying for those grants for next year.
And, and once we get to the point where we're gonna do that, this patch, and we decided that, I'll be very honest, this is your specialty, I agree with Ron on that, I'm gonna step back, and I'm gonna let you do your thing, and, and design what needs to be out there, because I don't know anything about that. The whole trouble that I've had this whole time is the money. Where's it gonna come from? That's what's been scaring me and holding me back, it's an awful lot of money.
That's very valid, point of view, Chris.
So I'm, I'm, my thoughts are on this, and we can, we can do this right now. I'd even be willing to make a motion to go ahead and patch everything, make it safe, and start the process for writing these grants. And I don't know if I said this, or I sent it to the board, but I will. Chief Wushai has offered his services in grant writing for the same, the same process he uses for writing for the fire department, because he has the expertise. Later on tonight, we're talking about requests for proposals. If we get a planner, the planners can do that also. So, I mean, we'll have a couple of different options for writing grants. But honestly, that's the only thing that I'm really comfortable with, is doing a patch. And let's, I agree, let's go gun hole and get it going, and, and make this happen for next spring, hundred percent. And try for grants. If we get it, great. If we don't, then we have to look at where we're gonna get the money from, on the budget.
But at that point, we'd be shovel-ready for it.
Right.
So you're making that motion?
Yeah.
I'll support it.
Oh, good, Cam, before I make it. Okay.
But I would like to ask, if, if we're gonna patch this, that, I bring in a contractor to do two areas, and then the two worst areas, because I think trying to cold patch it, it's gonna be tough. The one area I speak of is right here off the, the cement sidewalk.
I saw that.
That is really down almost a foot. Not only would it take a lot of cold patch to kind of level that out, it, it, it's gonna be near impossible to try and make it somewhat uniform and smooth. And then, of course, down here by the triangle, where it's alligatored really bad, and then, and it's actually just peeling out. I would actually prefer to use a contractor just to repair those two small areas, and then cold patch the rest where we have large shear points and, and fatigue. Now, obviously, I don't have any quotes to give you for those, but I would imagine those, because they're small areas, that's costing minimal. And I could produce some quotes before we would proceed with the work.
Okay, motion, but who made the original motion? Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Turchi. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
So to understand this correctly, Chris, your, your motion was to, for the DPDW to go out and get.
Get the, get the spots repaired to make the path safe.
And get a quote for the board, or?
Well, I think it's a safety issue at this point. If, I mean, if you agree that the cost is gonna be minimal, and, and this has to be done, it really, it just has to be done. If the rest of the board is comfortable with, with just going out and doing it, then, what do you guys think? But if we, if we go for quotes, we're looking at another one.
I agree with Chris, just get the best, you know who's gonna give you the best work, just go for it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Clerk's report.
We have an election tomorrow, Richmond Community Schools, village election. There is information on the back counter, and we'll be here all day. Hope he's here. That's it.
Thank you. Unfinished business, Township Office North entrance lock request.
Okay, I finally got the quote, and what this entails, it's a little bit more than I was expecting. It's eight hundred dollars plus two hundred dollars per, for, for, per year. For what it is, is the software. The software on the swipe card system has not been updated since we moved into this building, so six or seven years. What is happening, and this is another thing that I was telling them, every time Windows doesn't update on the server, it blows me out of the system. Won't let me in, won't let me do anything. So I have to actually go out and get rid of those updates that Microsoft felt was important to put on the server, and that makes the, the program functional again. The program is old enough that it, it's just not compatible with the new Windows Seven and, and the security updates that have been going on. I don't have a problem continuing to do that, but I wanted to put the quote out, eight hundred dollars plus two hundred dollars a year. And this would give us the.
Two, almost two forty a year, annual.
Right. This would also take care of where the back door would be programmed to be locked all the time.
Could that door just be keyed with a key lock?
The door automatically opens through the wind pad program.
My que, my question is, can it be keyed, key locked, to where it can be accessed with a key?
Yeah, but it's still gonna open up every day at eight o'clock.
Okay.
So you'd have to put a new mechanism in or something.
When you say open up every day at eight o'clock, on the days where closed, where, where the other ones are closed?
It's just like the front door, it opens at eight thirty in the morning, it closes at twelve.
I understand.
Opens at one, closes at five.
On the days where closed, is it closed?
It's closed all the time.
All right, can it be accessed with a key at that time? Could it be accessed with a key?
Doesn't need to be, you can use your key card.
If, if we didn't have a key card set up there, could we install a key lock into that door? An, an actual physically key?
Yeah, I don't know why not, but.
I, this just seems like a lot of money to spend on that.
I agree.
And I know there's concerns about keys. I, I was even thinking of something as simple as putting a lock box outside that door with a code that could be changed every so often for our deputies. It just still could gain the access. This, this is very, very costly.
Well, this isn't for the sheriff's door.
This isn't for the sheriff's door, this is for the.
Oh, I thought this was for the sheriff's door.
No, this is for the building department door.
And all of the doors that are worked with the keys, all.
All right, I, that's my mistake, then. I thought this was for the end entrance that we were talking about.
This was to change the programming on the building department doors, so that it doesn't open up at eight thirty in the morning and close at noon, to take it off of. And in the process of getting that, they said the new program would allow us to do that, plus would fix the problem that I have to keep calling them and saying, I can't get into the program because Microsoft updated our server. So it's twofold. And I agree, it's a lot of money.
What's our per annum right now?
Nothing. We bought the program once with the system, six through twelve.
All right. This is my next question. Is that system compatible with any other programs?
I have no idea. It's ADT Tyco, they're the ones that installed it. I wasn't involved in the original purchasing of the key card system. This is, it's the key, this program is the old key card system. It's all the doors, it's all the key cards, it's all the fobs.
Basically, what you're saying, and I know it's not a virus, but basically, every time there's an update, there's an issue with the entire building. And you're going through this how often, on average?
I only go through it when I have to go do something, such as, we got a new employee, I went to make a new swipe for her, and couldn't, because I couldn't get into the system, and then I had to go and delete everything that had gone through. You know, I went month by month deleting until I hit where, you know.
My only concern is this, once, if we do this, is a monopolized cost, where they could say it's two thirty-seven this year, next year it's three hundred, a year after that, four hundred. I, I, that would be my only concern.
That's what I said, I was surprised at the price that I was given. I just was getting a price because I was asked to get a price for the door, so.
That's, that's why I thought that incorporated the sheriff's door. I, I think we should look at a, a different system, real quick, at least get two bids on another system.
I would think that a new key card system would be a lot more money than what this would be.
Yeah, this is just a software update, is all this is.
Yeah, this is a software update that hasn't been updated in, in six, seven years, so.
And, and are we looking at, if we don't do something, that maybe this whole system's shut down, and all of a sudden we can't get in or through the building? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I never had, even when, even when the system has been where I can't get into the program, the key cards are still working. So there hasn't been a, a problem with that. Doesn't mean there, there wouldn't be, but at this point in time, there hasn't been, so. Um.
Yes.
At the same time, we should look into pushing, pushing the, the Windows eight. This Windows eight is out now. I can't hear you, Mary.
She said we should check into Windows eight.
No, that would be. That would be the whole server, that would be the whole server, so.
Yeah, as long as you're good here.
Actually.
That kind of money right now, you may as well, you know, jump into the ladies, for you first, uh.
I have a wish list for capital items next year as, as new server and the whole shot, so I haven't quite started giving prices yet, it's just kinda like out there.
I'd, I'd like to see a couple other prices, just, just to make sure on this.
I'm gonna probably, like, like I said, I just brought it to the board because I was asked to get the price. It wasn't something I was out shopping for.
Is it two thirty-seven for, two thirty-seven or annually, is that to keep it updated? So when it comes to Windows eight, and nine, and ten, and twenty, and thirty, that they're gonna keep doing that?
No, I think it's for.
Just a service charge, it says.
Support for them, if I have a problem, I call them, and then they don't charge me.
Oh. And then it says right here, title should have the right to increase annual service charges after one year.
Call the DPDW.
So Jody, you don't really see it as a hundred percent necessary?
Pardon me?
You don't see it as a hundred percent necessary?
No, no, that's what I said, I was, you know, I was getting the price because of the issues we were having, and the fact that I was asked to, you know, get a quote and getting the door locked. I could actually ask around on a couple other, to see if another, another system could take over what we have, but I sure don't wanna replace that whole system.
And then, if, if we are gonna make detemination, I'd like to have attorney job, look at the wording in some of this on termination and everything, in case we have to get out of it. Whichever that we're gonna look at.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I'd be, I'd be happy to. And I did notice a couple things in here that should probably be adjusted, the board is gonna go forward with.
Okay.
That's what I said, this was one of those, I was asking, here it is, but not that I agree with it. I will, I will find out if other companies can do something to the system we have without, without replacing that whole system.
Okay. You have a motion at this time?
Make a motion to table the entrance lock request until Jody gets other bids.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Advoker. Any other questions or discussion? All of us in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. New business, fire department equipment purchase request, chief.
Thank you. Last week, I sent the board a letter. I'll summarize real quick. The extrication equipment at Station Two is sixteen years old, and it's past its useful life. We cannot get replacement parts for any of it anymore. We attempted to last year. The jaws are incapable of doing the job we need them to do to move metal and make access in the vehicles to rescue patients. The ram is, actually, the tip of the ram is broke off, so it's pretty much useless now. So I've gone to the Fire Expo back a couple of months ago, that was held in, in Novi. Met with the Homatro dealer. Homatro is the brand name that we purchased four years ago for Station One. And after meeting with the command staff, we decided which equipment we needed. And we came up with a list, I provided that to the vendor, and also, parent company of Homatro was able to give us their competitive price. There is only one dealer per state, so that's why there's only one call in the state of Michigan from the Homatro dealer, and that is First Do Fire Supply Company. So at this time, unless there are some questions, I'm requesting the board approve the fire department purchase, the new extrication equipment for First Do Fire Supply Company, and also, in your motion to include approval, the fire department to sell the old stuff, if I possibly can get some money. They're still checking with the company, First Do is checking with the Montreux to see on a trade-in, but he said it's pretty, pretty much not gonna happen. But there are companies out there for.
Refurbish that, that equipment?
Yeah. So, but there are companies out there that buy used stuff, so they'll take five different sets and maybe make one set. So we might get a couple thousand dollars for, for the old set.
That was my question, it was like, do you want, or if you can't buy parts for it?
And that, that's it.
Yes.
If there are companies that will take or buy old sets, why don't we contact them and see what they have available?
Because the last thing we wanna nip by is some old refurbished set that doesn't open up the new metals of the vehicles that are out there now. That's, that's the other problem with this old set. That style, which is sixteen years old, even if you could get new tips put on them, and a new ram tip built, okay? They're capable of opening up the new, and cutting into the new steels that are out there, the new boron steels and things like that, Mary Beth.
Do they come with any kind of a guarantee?
The new set?
No, they refurbish.
I couldn't tell you, because.
That'd be interesting to find out.
Okay, but I would not be in favor whatsoever of buying a used set of re. But I would not be in favor whatsoever of buying a used set of refurbished equipment that is incapable of opening up the current vehicles. That's the problem, that's the other problem we're having. The set we have is incapable of doing the job anymore.
Any other questions?
This item was budgeted for, by the way. This was one of our capital outlay items that I budgeted for in the current budget here.
If this was purchased, you'd have it in, you'd have it before the fiscal year started?
Yes. Delivery is four to six weeks, he said.
And you wanna go with First Do?
That's correct.
Just kinda in shipping in there in Michigan.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the jaws for, from First Do Fire Supply Company. And a motion that we allow Chief Wu Shae to sell the old jaws if at all possible.
Zoom out in your motion.
Purchase for thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Real quick update on the vehicle. We just got an email today from our sales rep. Cam, Marty and I will be going up to Grand Rapids next week to do the final inspection on the new vehicle, so I'm expecting delivery in about two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Two thousand thirteen lawn fertilization proposal.
I submitted a quote from our lawn fertilization contractor that we've used for the last two years. He is proposing to continue the service at no additional cost. He's carrying through the same quote, same prices that they've helped through for the last two years. They've done a great job for us. Matter of fact, they do additional touch-ups and applications that really are additional, but they don't charge it for, charge this one. It's kinda like a maintenance, that they call it. So they're out, they're out in the area, monthly.
This was, I'm sorry, Kim, but this was just bid like two years ago or one year ago?
Uh, I believe it was two years ago.
Yeah. And by far, they were the champions.
Yeah, they were, they were way, they were quite a bit cheaper than everybody else. And like I said, they, they stuck to their prices and I don't buy any stuff. Cost just keeps going up, so I was kinda surprised they were able to hold their price again for us this year. And as most of you see, the, not only is the ground's finally dried out, but the weeds are really starting to take off now, you know, with the warmer weather and it's just gonna keep progressing. So I'd like to get going on this as soon as possible.
Okay.
This is a total cost of twenty-five hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah, that's a bad one.
Twenty-one per power.
Yeah, the three, the three sheets, you can see they're broken down for each location.
I'll make the motion that we authorize superintendent Cam Trombley to hire True Green once again to do the fertilization and weed control at three locations for a total of twenty-five, ten.
Support.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by clerk Keith. Any other discussions or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Eric Derplesch. Seasonal ground maintenance position.
Last month, I, I asked the board to authorize me to interview the three people that we interviewed last year for the full-time position. We did contact all three. We only had two respond. We did interview two people. And one of those two people, I would like to recommend Patrick Germaine for the seasonal position. And if at all possible, I would, if, if you are to approve that recommendation tonight, I would like to start him this week, if possible.
This was at ten dollars now, and the benefits correct?
Nine dollars.
Okay.
She said yeah. I made the motion that we authorize superintendent Cam Trombley to hire Patrick Germaine for a seasonal grounds maintenance person, and he may start as soon as possible.
Support.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're gonna be contacting him, Kim?
Yeah, I'm gonna contact him first thing tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. Meeting room sound system improvement proposal.
First, we're gonna have Premier Sound talk about this. They were here last month, they did some tweaking on the system. At that time, we kinda talked about things that could be done to it and I've given you all the quote that, so I'll let you talk about it.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dave Seigler from Premier Sound. Basically, what I proposed is replacing the old equipment. And some of the equipment you had, you had the key pieces that you have, the amplifier and all the wireless microphones are from a system that we had put in in the old building that was used there for quite a few years and then moved here when this building was constructed. The only thing in here that you really have that is new are the loudspeakers in the ceiling. Because the, whatever, what you had there was completely inappropriate for a building this size and shape and this high of a ceiling. But basically, everything else needs to be upgraded. The, as I mentioned in my letter proposal, that the wireless microphone frequencies that you're, you have in use now are no longer used. They've been reassigned by the FCC. And of course, that was all, that's a big long story, but that was all brought about by the introduction of digital television. When digital TV came along, all the frequencies, the bandwidth was completely allocated. There's only a certain amount of frequencies that all wireless things can physically be on. And when digital TV came in, all of a sudden, we needed all these new TV channels, but we couldn't get rid of the old ones unless the whole country threw away all their TV sets on the same day, which of course is not feasible. So they had to jam these, these frequencies in. So they reallocated a lot of frequencies. The frequencies that you're using now are no longer used for wireless microphones. So they've been reassigned for other uses. These other uses have more powerful transmitters than these little battery-operated units we have, you know, that you're using here. So what happens is you get interference, you get dropouts, you get volume flux, you have, you just, there are just all kinds of issues that the only way it can be dealt with is by using the newer systems we've had proposed, which are on clean frequencies that nothing else is on, other than wireless microphones. So basically, I'm talking about upgrading all of the, the old equipment in the system and getting rid of some of that, those types of things that are happening. Because this is a wireless microphone too, so.
I think he's doing that on purpose.
Yeah. Go ahead.
He did too.
But yeah, there's just some anomalies that happen on these older frequencies that there's
just, there's nothing you can do with it. So what basically we're suggesting, I'm gonna keep one piece in your system. You have a computerized automatic mixer in that system, which is still a current product, an excellent product. We're gonna add another unit to that because unfortunately, that unit doesn't have enough capacity for all your wireless mics. We wanna get all the wireless mics onto that computer system. It does a lot of slick things. One of the things it does is it turns off everyone's mic unless you're actually speaking, which is part of the problem why we're getting some of the feedback now. But you know what? All, all these mics open if only one person, if only one microphone is actually in use. So it does that. It adjusts, for example, if all of a sudden the heating syst, cooling system came on and created a lot of noise in here, it would sense that all of your microphones would pick that noise up. And when all of the mics send the same signal into the computer, it says, well, that's not somebody talking, because everybody's not talking at the same frequency at the same time. It'll raise the volume of the sound system to compensate for the additional ambient noise level. Just does some really slick things. So that's the piece you have. We're gonna expand that with that four input mixer, so now we can get all of the mics through the computer system. And then replace the amplifier with updated amplifier. That's pretty much an end install feedback, a newer feedback eliminator, and that'll take care of this humming and howling and so forth, so. And then of course, when it's all done, then we tune the system. I bring in an acoustical analyzer in and with a pink noise generator, and we tune the system to the room acoustics.
That's included in the price?
Yes, included in the price.
Okay, and what about a warranty?
The warranty is, our labor is one year, and the manufacturer's products are a minimum of a year. Some of these products, for example, the amplifier at the bottom, that's a three-year manufacturer warranty. But nothing is less than one year parts and labor from the manufacturers.
Will this affect our devices, our hearing assistance devices, they may have also?
No, they'll operate the same way.
No problem.
The hearing assistance devices are on seventy-two megahertz, which is a much lower frequency range. And that's a, that didn't get changed by the FCC. They all operate on a very low frequency range. So yeah, it won't have any impact on that.
So this should be good for quite some time?
Well, you've had this equipment probably since the, probably since the late nineties, I'm gonna guess. I, I should've looked it up before I came out tonight, but we moved it over here in one oh seven, was this building?
Eight.
Oh, eight? Okay. And it was quite a few years in the other building, so you've probably gotten twelve, fourteen years of good use out of that. That's, that's pretty good life expectancy.
Well, my, my question is to upgrade this? We still have a lot of life expectancy left, or should we be looking at something else?
Oh, no, you have, you have, well, everything except that one piece will be upgraded. And that one piece is incredibly, that's made by Schur, it's an incredibly reliable piece of equipment.
Okay.
I have no, no qualms about leaving that piece in the system, but everything else back there is gonna go away. Everything that's fourteen, twelve, fourteen years old is gonna go away and be upgraded. So yeah, you'll be good for another, hopefully twelve, fourteen years again.
Okay.
Any trade in feelings?
Yeah. Nobody wants old technology.
Gotta try.
Nobody wants that junk.
That's a bad thing, old technology.
It's unfortunate. We're gonna throw away, I mean, let's say TV sets now, you know, it's these flat-screen TVs that, they're like unrepairable. We'll take them to the shop and it's like, the cost is not worth servicing them. It's a shame. It's not like the old days. I got into this business in nineteen sixty-nine and we still had tubes and amplifiers at that point, so things have changed. It used to fix everything, but now it's, so much of this stuff is thrown away, it's just a shame, but it's the way it is.
Any other questions?
The price on the microphones, are there some that are comparable, a little cheaper maybe? Those are gonna be the overall price, when, when that number's kind of-
The, well, Schur versus one of the foremost manufacturers wireless microphones. And Schur is almost eighty-year-old American company. I'm not sure what that is. In any event, those are the problems that we're gonna get rid of, but the, their base price on wireless mics start at three hundred and twenty-five dollars and their most expensive system is two thousand. So this is at the lower end of the scale, price-wise. The two thousand dollar ones I wouldn't recommend, because that's the stuff Hollywood uses and they have budgets that we can't even think about.
I will say, that's one of our trouble spots too, is getting picked up. People sometimes don't stand close enough in stuff.
Right, right.
I think they have decent quality there is important.
But yeah, the reason, the other problem with going with the like expensive mic is that I won't be able to get nine of them to work together simultaneously. One of the things that makes wireless mics more expensive as they go up in price is because they have to be built on a narrower bandwidth so that you can use more of them simultaneously. The least expensive, that three hundred and twenty-five dollar system that Schur makes, you can only use five wireless mics at one time of that model. And we're talking about nine microphones. This system will do up to twenty, so you've got some expansion room. The two thousand dollar systems, they can do eighty or ninety microphones at once, which of course, in Hollywood, they might need that, but you know, for this kind of purpose, it isn't necessary. But that's basically what you're getting when you're getting a more expensive mic. And then you're also getting a little more audio quality, and if we were, had opera singers in here or something, well then, yeah, we'd be really concerned about that. But for the spoken word, even these old mics are still clean and clear, you know, you don't, you don't need to get into that, those, those high-priced units. But yeah, the lower cost unit won't allow me to put nine of them in and work simultaneously. And there's only one model below this in the, in the line.
Any other questions? My other question is pretty much for the board. I mean, we're pretty much putting a whole new system in. Do we have to go out for bids? By our own policy?
Do we have to go out for bids?
I mean, we're pretty much getting a whole new system here. And not that I have any problem with it, I'm just wondering if legally we-
No, I understand.
We have to do that.
I'll ask the-
Well, from state statute, there is no state statute requiring you to go out to bids. If you have a bidding policy that is the board's bidding policy, and there's always up to the board to waive its bidding policy in special circumstances, if you feel this is a special circumstance, that is in your discretion. You should try to keep with your bidding policy though, otherwise the warranty, waive it, unless it is supportable. So without having reviewed the bidding policy, if there is one and this is over the threshold, then that's, that's the general rule you should follow, except in exceptional circumstances. One of those exceptional circumstances sometimes is when there's a sole source supplier. And I don't know if that's a situation here, and I would be surprised.
That's not with any of these products. Yeah, we're not a sole source for any of these products. I don't like to do that, because that locks you in, and I don't, I don't lock my customers in. I like people to deal with us because they like us, not because they have to deal with us. I mean, that's just a personal philosophy that I was, had, have had, so I never expect any products that we are the sole source for.
How long will you hold to this quote?
Uh, we could, that's probably, would probably be good for at least another sixty days. I can't, I don't anticipate any-
Gives time to go out first.
Any manufacturer price increases.
Okay.
The only thing I'm gonna ask if you go out to bid is-
Allow you to revise-
Don't send, well, don't send them my materials list, because I've already done the work.
Sure, absolutely.
Let them figure it out for themselves.
Absolutely.
You know?
And also-
Just so, just so it's fair.
Allow, allow this gentleman, if he would like to revise at any time, also.
As a matter of fact, what I would suggest is that this be withdrawn and you resubmit as part of all the other-
So it's, so it's fair.
That's fine.
Yes.
We're very competitive. I, these prices, I, I'm not worried at all about that. We're very competitive.
Now, how, how long have we been with Premier Sound? Since the old building? I mean, have we always?
I don't know, yeah, since-
The original system was put in by you guys?
Since the original system was put in at the other building, yes.
Wouldn't that mean something to you?
That's a long time.
Okay.
Motion.
I'll make a motion that we table this and put it out for bids for the replacement or update of the sound system.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir, for your information. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm taking that this is my to-do list. So my question is, do you want me to put an ad in the paper?
How about we give all the bids back to-
Just contact.
We'll give you all the bids back, you should can retake them.
My thoughts, Jody, is just, you know, either look online or look in the phone, just call some local companies. I can't, there's really no reason to put a bid, you know, just put an ad in the paper.
Okay. Yes, I just wanted to make sure. Sorry, you have my margin?
Yeah, I think as long as it's two comparable bids, who cares? Two more for what we have. Okay. Assessment Administration Services LLC contract renewal proposal. Mr. Griffin, thank you for being patient.
First of all, good evening, and I'd like to thank the board. We enjoyed our first year doing the Assessment Administration Services for Lennox Township, and I thought it went well. We enjoyed the staff and the most, but I heard all good things. What I'd like to do before I talk specifically about the contract is give a little background of where we're at at this point. Along with the contract to do the assessing services last year, we also had the record card re-inspections to make sure that all the record cards were up to date, accurately drawn and so forth. As you know, we got a late start last year, we had some prior commitments with Kimball Township and Greenwood Township, so we started late in the summer with the inspections. And I think we got a little over five hundred done. We finished our Kimball and Greenwood Township, both were fourteen-point reviews as well as inspections and they both passed. Their record card, uh, inspections were ninety-four percent for Kimball and ninety-two percent for, uh, Greenwood. Starting here at the end of this week and into next week, we're gonna have our two teams out. We've got our magnets for Lennox Township for the cars. And we'll have our teams out, and we've already sent out mailers, so everybody knows that we're gonna be out there and we're going to finish Lennox Township and it will be done this summer. We've, uh, put off doing any other inspections because we wanted to make sure we get Lennox done and we want it to be done at that level. We also hit the seminar this winter and I thought it went really well, it was well-attended. I'd like to see maybe even a little better attendance next year, but as we get familiar with the folks that they do with us, I think we'll get a little bit better attendance. But it was well-attended, I think there's quite a few people here. So we're here tonight to just propose a contract extension. We'd like to do it for an additional three years. There are some changes in the contract because we're going to bring in additional staff with this contract as we wanna facilitate some significant changes we need to do to the role. So we're hiring, uh, Mr. Tom Monchek, he's a Michigan Advanced Assessor, uh, Level Three, uh, probably thirty years' experience. I've worked, he's worked for me in the past in other communities. Uh, obviously Seth and Christine will also be here and Lisa and Tom will be there to help too. And obviously I come in on Fridays for contributions, uh, whenever needed. And, uh, I've done a lot with regards to that. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward, we're gonna can, get the role straightened out the way we like it, so it's to the Pacific, so you can pass any AMAR or any fourteen-point review that comes your way. Believe me, we've dealt with the state a lot, so they're familiar with us and we're familiar with them. And, uh, you know, I think we do a good job and, and we'd like to just continue to go forward with Lennox Township.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Griffin?
You've got some. You're saying, you're bringing up Tom, another gentleman, Tom, Lisa had told me about this. Uh, so Lisa or Tom will be here when we're here?
Yes.
One or the other will be here?
Lisa and Tom will be here every day.
Okay.
And of course Seth and Christine also.
Okay.
Because we've got some things with the role, I'd rather not discuss them in a public hearing, if, if you'd like to know about the specifics, it would be much easier to come into the office and we can show you. But we've got some things we need to get done and, uh, I'd like to get it the way I like to do it. It's more efficient, it's more effective and it'll be right.
Well, Lisa and I talked and that was, uh, she's worked very well, you're, you're, all the people have worked very well with us because the treasurer and the assessors have them together, I don't know how, it immediately gets by. If they don't, um, anything that I had asked Seth is immediately on the phone or Christine took her and Lisa's in giving me the info. And as I said, when I went down to the county, I gave them the stuff, we were, you know, very happy that, I said, I'm not answering the phone. If I see the public county on that phone, I'm not picking it up, but...
Like I said at the beginning, with every community is a little different, it's always a work in progress, our contracts aren't making fancy. We're gonna do whatever you need us to do to make your life more comfortable and at the end of the day, hopefully, we'll be pretty much invisible.
We work very comfortable, but I would like to see Lisa here more.
And that's another, uh, reason we're bringing another person to address, specifically the conversation here on the same day.
I'm not here on Fridays, we're closed, so I don't get to see you and then, but...
Unfortunately, my day to come in on Friday, but it works really well when it comes to tax reg...
I can verify that, I do catch them here on Friday.
I was chasing ticks this Friday.
You should've been in here.
Uh, any questions? I met with Lisa today and we talked for probably a good forty-five minutes. And I know I got a phone call from you right afterwards. Um, and she addressed, I think, pretty much my concerns, uh, which were nothing major, they were just actual concerns, things I wanted to address. Um, and I told her I'm not real comfortable with a three-year contract being as new as you guys are and we haven't seen a whole lot. But then with your conversation, the only thing that I would like to see added into this and it was what you suggested and I like it a lot, and I talked, Karen was the other one that I saw after I talked to you and mentioned it to her, was you've added in with other communities that either yourselves or the township can cancel the contract with thirty days' notice.
Correct, and we have no problem doing that, we've done it with a lot of other communities as we grow with them. And the truth is, you know, you know, we're gonna do the work and we're gonna do it well, so we don't have any concerns about that. So we will add in with the contract, there were thirty days' notice, you know, the township ourselves can...
Does it, it made perfect sense what you said, you know, it's, it's hard for you guys to look three years ahead and you only have a one-year contract.
It makes it easier to hire people and you can get quality people when you've got some, along with Henry, both the thirty days' notice gives everybody the comfort level and the truth is, it makes us do the work, you know, you know, we've done very well and with that comes, uh, more attention and we've got some more attention from the state, but that just makes us do our job that much better.
But as long as that's added in, you're comfortable with it?
That will be it.
Any other questions for us?
Just, uh, this is guaranteed cost for each...
Yeah, another advantage too, and I talked to Chris about it, is this is a fixed rate. It's fixed for the next three years, so you know what your cost is gonna be. There's no end based on, because we've ended with some high inflation down the road. So it's a fixed number for three years. It works great for us with regards to hiring people and at the same time, it works for you because you know exactly what the number's gonna be.
Do you wanna go six years? Do you wanna go six years? You wanna lock it in?
And have you had any, any, uh, luck with the tax tribunals? Or we got to settle all of them or?
Well, the problems, the problems, a little bit of background with the tax rules is, you know, we went into a really bad economy in two thousand and seven and I've, I've seen this in some other communities unfortunately is, rather than deal with them upfront right away, a lot of people decided to just settle them. Well, you settle for three years before you get pushed into a hearing or settle and you're, you end up paying for three years, three years in, for some of these should've been taken care of right away. The example I give is Myers. I mean, Myers should've been settled right away because there were several court hearings, a lot of communities did go to court right at the beginning and they all lost and they lost big. And the example I would give is... Myers, the people that actually went to hearings on Myers, they're settling for two thousand and eleven at twenty-nine dollars a square foot was the court's ruling. At thirty-five dollars a square foot for two thousand and twelve. Lennox Township, and only because I've dealt with these folks for a long time, we settled at much higher number than twenty. We settled at forty dollars and forty-one dollars. And the average settlement in Macomb County was still much lesser than even settlement. But because I've, you know, I've worked with these folks for a long time, I have a relationship with them and I treat them fair and I had basically told them, look, this is our first year in this community, we need to work this out, we need to work out at a higher rate. So we are one of the higher rates that we settled at, but it should've been taken care of two years prior because the, the other communities have already gone to court, they've already lost with the big box stuff. And, you know, so we got stuck with three years. Uh, a lot of them were settling, we've gotten rid of most of them. Uh, Friday I worked on a, uh, a, uh, valuation disclosure where we may end up going to a hearing for one. Um, we've gotten rid of most of them, we'll take care of the ones that are still out there. Um, one of the ones was, I walked down a piece of property Friday, it was a wetlands mitigation for a property in Chesterfield Township. Once it's wetlands mitigated, it's deed restricted, you can't cut the lawn, you can't ride dirt bikes on, you can't build on it. Um, that should've never ended up in court, the value should've just been reduced down to a piece of property that has no, you know, value other than, uh, maybe go bird watching. Um, but that wasn't done, so we're gonna take care of that one too. But it's a lot better now, the market's beginning to turn around, I think you'll see less of that. And, uh, the ones that, you know, that are coming out now, uh, if they, if they require an appraisal, we'll come to the board and talk to them. But for the most part, we can do the valuation disclosures on our own. Um, Stephanie, the attorney, we've worked, I've worked with Stephanie in other committees for years, so have a real good relationship with her and we'll take care of whatever needs to be done.
Bill, the same stipulation you have, the list of people that I had said in the last, I, I have no problem that you're going to put that in there.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Three, the three years and at that rate, but I also would like that list of people that have worked in Lennox as assessing not be hired.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. That's a motion.
Motion by Treasurer Antbacher, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Just real quick, gentlemen, I appreciate your proposal and, uh, Seth, I appreciate your professionalism every day. You've done a good job since you've been here and Bill likewise, I appreciate you answering the phone every time I call. It's been a pleasure. Also Lisa and Christine also. A and B Commercial Cleaning Proposal. Jeanette, can I get you up here real quick, please? This is a quote to scrub the ceramic tile, tile in the main lobby entrance area, the customer service hall and the contractor's entrance. It excludes the restrooms and that's one of the things that JB went, uh, JB, Jeanette, Deputy Supervisor wanted to bring up is that, uh, we did expect those restrooms, they also, they should be done.
The public restrooms, the floors, the tile in there was done just a few, maybe a month or so ago because it had some rust stain on there. But the employee restrooms, the grout in there is, I don't want to say disgusting, but...
It's very dirty.
Disgusting, it's supposed to be a light beige and it is actually a dark, dark, almost black. So it really needs to be cleaned by the steam cleaning, which they're gonna be doing in this hallway if you peruse that. This hallway has a big stain mark by this door here going out where the rain garden is and it goes right across to the other entrance, back. And that should hopefully come out.
How much would it be to add the bathrooms?
I don't know, because we talked about that tonight, um, this morning. The bathrooms are small, it's six hundred dollars to do this whole walkway of, you know, entranceway. The bathrooms being as small as they are, it can't be very much. He, they came out and did the public restrooms and I think there was a very little charge of anything.
Yeah, you're probably talking the additional sixty to eighty square foot.
Yeah.
They're gonna be right there because they're gonna be doing the town, you know, entrance there, the building entrance, so.
I would highly advise it.
I'll make a motion that we authorize A and B Commercial Cleaning to machine scrub the ceramic tile in the main lobby entrance, customer service hall area, contractor's entrance and the, um, employee restrooms at a cost of six hundred plus whatever reasonable fee for the restrooms.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Turkeys, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion?
Is this, do we didn't get this done regular, sorry. Have we done, does this get done regular?
It hasn't been done since we've been here.
For six years, okay.
I believe, you mean with the, uh, restrooms, the public restrooms, it needs to be done.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Jeanette. Lennox Township Ordinance Review. Attorney Chaplin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Uh, this is, uh, actually a few, uh, three different matters pertaining to the township, uh, township's ordinances combined into one agenda item. Uh, you hopefully have my review report before you along with two attachments to it and I'll just briefly go over those.
Please just...
For the public's benefit, uh, what, what this is about. Uh, the first, uh, question that I was asked to look into was whether the, uh, civil infraction, uh, penalty option is, is a viable option for the township to incorporate into its ordinances. Right now, most, if not actually all of the township's ordinances are punishable as misdemeanors. Uh, where the, uh, court is, when it's brought into district court, the judge's only choice as far as penalty is to send the violator to jail uh, and/or give them a monetary fine. Uh, and there is no ability to have the situation of the violation corrected, the judge cannot order them to correct it. Going the civil infraction route provides the opportunity for a district court judge to grant what's called an injunctive relief and prohibit the person from continuing to violate the township's ordinances and require, uh, in a blight situation or zoning ordinance violation situation to correct the violation, uh, and make it, and bring it into compliance with the township's ordinances uh, and fine the individual, there's, but there is no jail punishment as part of those types of violations. So if you're, if an individual, a resident is in violation of an ordinance, say for example, they have a plate of property, unregistered cars parked out and that are illegally parked in their yard and whatnot, they don't, uh, face the potential of having to go to jail as a result of that type of a violation. But instead, they would get a fine and the judge may order them to clean out the property and bring it into compliance. Now, I looked through the ordinances as the first stage of this analysis. Uh, as I indicated to you, it brought back a list of ordinances, I've listed all of the township's ordinances and identified which ones that I would recommend be appropriate ordinances for utilizing the civil infraction, uh, punishment or penalty method. And, uh, I have those listed in attachment number one and it is, as you can see, almost all of the ordinances uh, except for the park rules, uh, and the criminal, um, misdemeanor violations, uh, for things such as assault and battery and, uh, um, marijuana possession and, uh, things of that nature, drunk driving and so forth, which would all remain as misdemeanors. Uh, so I provided that list to you and I'm asking you, uh, the board, to give me any further direction on that item. If you would like me to proceed at this point to the next step, which would be the last step of preparing a civil infraction ordinance that sets this out in the ordinance, uh, in a separate ordinance and also amending all of these individual ordinances to refer to that civil infraction ordinance. I can take that as the next step of the process and bring it back to the board for consideration. Those would be ordinance amendments that we brought back to the board for action. Um, second part of this is I was asked to look at the law enforcement offenses to see if any of them are outdated. Uh, these are the criminal offenses I was mentioning earlier, such as assault and battery, minor and possession, uh, things of that nature. Uh, and the township has a number of those ordinances. Uh, I've referenced them in attachment two to the materials and they're in part sixty-seven of the township's book of ordinances. And I've gone through each of those, uh, separate ordinances and evaluated them for the board, uh, identifying where, uh, it is, uh, the ordinance appears to be outdated and could use some updating, uh, uh, and I've made recommendations in that regard. And again, this is the first stage of the process, I can go through each of those with you if you'd like right now, but I know it's, I'm just getting on and you have a lot more on the agenda. But I think I've explained them all in here. The next step would be to, uh, if the board would like to direct me to go through and provide you with updates to these individual ordinances. I would work with the prosecutor, uh, personnel from my office in doing that, he's known the experience and, uh, looked into these in a lot of detail to make sure that, uh, they each be updated and a number of them, uh, for example, minor possession of alcohol or, um, um, possession of marijuana or even domestic assault. Now, options in the law and the state law that we can adopt is the township law that provides an opportunity for a person to be put on probation and potentially have it dismissed off their record. If they're a first-time offender and meet certain criteria and the judge is comfortable with it, the prosecutor's comfortable with it. And also with consultation with the victims in the event of a domestic assault in that situation. Provides that sort of flexibility, uh, for individuals that don't have their record permanently be smirched. Gives them an opportunity to clean up whatever they done messed up for their first-time offenders, dead body, and all sorts of things. Those would be incorporated into your ordinance as well. Uh, and then the third part of, of what I was assigned to do was, uh, to see if there were any other criminal offenses that might be available for the township to consider, such as what you did with the detailed fraud ordinance recently where, uh, by adopting a... a criminal ordinance at the local level, you can, uh, have that, uh, ticketed under local law and thereby receive the portion of the fines and do that at the local level instead of having it sent to the state level to help pay for law enforcement services and prosecutor services. Uh, we didn't identify any that you don't have at this point, other than perhaps the super drunk law, which we've recommended you do, that your drunk driving laws, and we can update that as well. Uh, so with that, that completes my report, and I'd be looking for, uh, the board's direction on what to do in terms of civil infraction, if you want me to proceed to stage two on that, and also if you'd want me to proceed to stage two on updating the law enforcement offenses.
I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Fireworks, what exactly is the state law? Because I guess, I thought it was one thing, Chris thought it was another, and so we need to hear what exactly the state law is. I'm sorry.
I think I was the culprit. I must have ended at 600 megahertz. Um, yes, the fireworks law was amended last year by the state of Michigan, uh, and, uh, essentially what has happened is the state has preempted, uh, the local regulation of the sale of fireworks, uh, at stands and whatnot. Uh, so while the township cannot regulate the sale of fireworks, it needs to update its ordinances to make sure it's not doing that, so it's not in violation of that state law. Uh, you, the township still can regulate the use of fireworks, uh, except on three days surrounding 10 national holidays that are identified in the state statute. The township's current ordinance is, does not contemplate any of that, uh, and is not consistent with state law in that regard. That's a summary, there's a lot more to it. MTA did a good write-up in the recent MTA magazine on it, summarized it as well, but that's the basics of it, and, uh, what we would be doing is updating the ordinance to make sure that it's consistent with state law.
Right, and this one you recommend?
Uh, yes, if I may, there is, it's actually in two parts of the township ordinances right now. It's referenced in two different areas. We're recommending deleting it in one area and amending it in the other area.
Okay.
And I, and I talked to Chief Boucher.
I talked to Chief Boucher, he, uh, he actually agrees with, with what he has.
Just a couple of things to add to it, Steve, that I would recommend is that, uh,
Please just go to the podium, Chief. Yes, and we can get together just on the phone over this, but, uh, the discharge, and that was brought up at the state level in all the meetings last year with the state chiefs, is local, locals can set the ordinance where any discharged fragments cannot go on neighboring property. Okay? So if I'm shooting them off at my house in bottle rockets, which are legal now, if it goes on somebody else's property, the township can draw it up in ordinance. You cannot have any, any of the remnants of the explosive device go on any neighboring or adjoining property. Also, it should include that it doesn't violate our noise ordinance, because we do have a current noise ordinance with so many decibels, and that should be included in, in, in this fireworks portion also.
Certainly, I'll, I'll take a look at those, at those two items. Uh, it, it, it is very possible, and I'll verify this one way or the other, but it's very possible that those regulations, uh, we may not be able to apply those during the three days that the state law permits without any regulation, what occurs with fireworks, but on all of the other, uh, what would it be, 335 days of the year?
Right. Something to look into, because I know their thoughts and warrant, that was one of the things they were using last year.
Yes, and there are, there are some communities that are pushing that envelope a little bit on, on things, because there are some common sense. Last year was quite a year, there were a lot of complaints, uh, and you might have remembered them from the newspapers, a lot of letters for the editors, uh, in the various newspapers complaining about all the noise and dogs going wild, you know, the fireworks ended extending beyond the permitted days and so on and so forth, so.
The fire, the fire department received a numerous amount of calls that were left on the recorder, and I return to people's calls, they're violating the noise ordinance, you need to call the sheriff department, the sheriff department needs to go out there and verify this, this, the fire department has no jurisdiction. It starts a fire, then we have jurisdiction, so.
I was quite impressed with everything you did, and I think I'm ready to be, have been moved forward into the next, um, all the way across the board.
Got a motion you need? With support? Motion by Clerk Keath, supported by Trustee Turchi. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
I'll proceed to stage two on both.
2013, 2014 water rates we'll tackle first. Gentlemen, is that?
Hello again. Um, you all seen a letter dated April 25 for the, um, um, recommended new waters, or the water rates. Again, we follow the same procedure, we get the changes from DWSD, and then we calculate the new rate for, uh, for the increase or decrease. So this year, we're looking at an, an increase about, uh, from $39 to $48 per thousand cubic feet. It's approximately an $8 increase per household.
Once again, this is a path through to cost.
Yep.
So just so the public is aware, it's not us raising it, this is a cost that's passed on to us, and we're raising it exactly what that cost is, not taking anything, uh, more onto that charge.
Yep, same procedure that we use every year. It's a, it's an approximate increase of a 9% from DWSD, and it was, we just added to our rates, and, uh, this is what we're recommending for, um, 2013, 2014.
Thank you. Any questions?
Make a motion that we approve the increase, um, from $39 to 48, was it 48.30? 48.30.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Treasurer Atbakker. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sewer rates.
Again, uh, this year we're looking at another increase, uh, based on the numbers that we received from Cook County and DWSD, and, uh, this, this is calculated a little bit different than the water, because we have the debt service and the county OMID, um, operation maintenance portion of it, and the bonds and all that, all those factors added into the rates, and, um, um, this year we are looking at $88.20 per thousand cubic feet, and increase 5.1% increase from last year. I'm sorry, here is what I'm looking at. From $83.90 to $88.20.
Even though we never like to have to raise, we do have to cover the expenses that we incur, so with that, I make a motion that we approve the rate increase on the water sewer, the sewer, from $83.90 per MCF to $88.20 per MCF.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Keath, supported by Treasurer Atbakker. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Request for proposals for township engineer and township planner.
I sent out an email last month, um, just recommending this, I was, uh, you know, when we went through this with the lawyer, it just, it just got me to thinking, and I looked back at the last time that we went out for bids for any of the, for either of these services and, and a specified engineer and planner was in 2009. So I'm thinking just to make sure that, you know, we're, we're getting, you know, the best services for our money and that everything's, you know, current with what's out there, that we should probably consider doing the same with the planner and the engineer. Uh, like I said in the email, it doesn't matter which one we do first, to me, uh, probably planner would be the easiest, get it out of the way quickest, and when we're done with that, do the same for the engineering firm. And from what I followed through all minutes, it was, it was, of course, done through the, uh, the supervisor's office, same as the law firm, and so did the last time, was he did the, uh, wrote the request for proposals.
Uh, just to set the record straight, it wasn't put out for bid this last time, um, due to, it was due to a resignation. So it wasn't something that we just came up with. The lawyer resigned, and that's why it went out to bid. There's been no resignation on the planner or the engineer. So this is, it's not the same scenario.
Well, it never hurts to check, um, and it wouldn't hurt to go through the, through the process. Doesn't mean we have to change, we could stay with the same people we did.
Absolutely.
Now we have, and that actually happened the last time we stayed with the same engineers, and we, we did switch planners.
I just have a question to Chris, uh, is, have this triggered from a performance standpoint, or?
No, not at all.
This is just a procedure that you think?
Oh, yeah, no, it's just, it's, it's like I said, 2009 was the last time it came up and it was done, and I just figured, you know, we should always be making sure we're getting the most we can for taxpayer money. It's just something, no, it has nothing to do with performance whatsoever.
Absolutely.
At either the planner or, or engineering firm. No, no, it's just being fiscally responsible, that's all it is.
Thank you.
I just have a comment regarding both planner and engineer. At this time, I would advise highly against this due to, um, things we have in the works. This might be something you want to look at possibly a year from now. Um, I think we have some things in the works that could be affected by this, and, uh, I'd hate to see any of that messed up.
Well, I understand that, but who knows what will happen in the works a year from now, and a year after that, and a year after that. Like Jody said, it doesn't mean we have to change anything, it's just being fiscally responsible. I understand where you're coming from, but...
Kind of the same scenario as the park path that you suggested.
I understand what you mean by that.
Wait a year. But, just my, my thoughts on this, I'd hate to see anything out.
I would hope that any planner or engineer could come in and do the same jobs as the ones we have. I, I would, that would be my thought.
Can I make a comment, please?
Sure.
I myself personally have worked with Sremed Safe closely for the last 15 years. Um, 15 years, a lot of history, and I don't think somebody could step in and do exactly what Sremed does for us. I look at Sremed as an invaluable resource for my department, as well as other things that we have going on here. Uh, I would really hate to lose that resource. I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, it wasn't that long ago that we went through this procedure, and I think it would be futile at this point because of the timeframe. I don't think the timeframe is long enough to, for a difference, a valuable difference to be made at this time. Just my opinion.
I, I just looked at it, I, I can tell you this, um, this gentleman, um, he is 100% for Lennox, and we have battles back and forth, and I, I, I force him to, uh, show me different perspectives, and he, and he does, and I appreciate that. And, uh, I call, he answers the phone, um, as well as Mr. Monver does. Uh, they, uh, they are hesitant to charge for most things, in my opinion, and I know they're very mindful of their billing, and it's been a pleasure working with both of those gentlemen, and I've, I've yet to have an instance where I've been dissatisfied.
I don't disagree with that, but that has nothing to do with it. This isn't a personal, this isn't a, you're doing a bad job, this is me, are we getting the most for our money?
You yourself, Ron, when you first came into office, said we need to be, what was it, proactive, we need to do the right thing.
That's correct.
Go out and check for this, so we're not doing anything different than what you did five years ago.
Well, we have to put this statement in, in perspective. That's because it wasn't done for 20 years.
That's not true at all.
It wasn't done for a long period of time.
There had been many changes in many different situations here.
Not according to what I, I had to see.
I've been here for quite a
Well, how long, well, can you tell me then, how long it was done prior to that?
I can tell you, there had been changes made in many
I'm just asking how long.
Attorneys, auditors, assessors, I can remember a particular time one year where they fired, the board fired the entire group. If you started with an A, you were attorney, an auditor, an assessor, you were gone.
Alls I'm asking for is a timeframe. How long did it take place?
I'm just telling you, this is not anything to do with us saying that Sremed or our planner is not doing a good job. We're being proactive and doing what we feel we need the best bang for our buck. We did it for the attorneys, I think we should do it for all of them.
My comment was, uh, what Karen brought up. Five years ago, um, we went out for bids and all, and that was because we had a change in board members. And then those board members had a chance to interview and decide that now we have a new board member, and it's also five years since we took the bids.
I have one question.
I agree with Chris that, yeah, we should all take a look at each one. Five years ago, we were told we should look at each one to be fiscally responsible. We're going to be fiscally responsible and look again, so.
Are we, are you saying just these, these two gentlemen, or are we doing everything? Other than the attorney, which we just did because of a resignation?
What else is everything?
You name it, auditor, everything. Is that what you want to look at? Or you just want to do these two gentlemen?
If that's what you're recommending?
I'm not recommending we do anything at this time.
I, I was thinking that the key three, the ones that we spend the most money on.
And I'm like you, I've, I've been very happy with our auditors over the years, I wouldn't want to change them, but if it means going out for our pieces to see what is what, and making sure we're getting the most bang for the buck, so be it. I would hope that we would decide that the auditors that we're already using...
I think they've been great.
I do too, absolutely.
They have not given me any, they've not given me any reason, uh, to doubt their, their ability and their performance. Um, Patrick Monver too was just certified, um, by Nicholas Saft, I guess, to, to instruct these classes to help us with our, uh, insurance rates. That's another thing to take into consideration. And once again, I, uh, I think it's very important to show, uh, stability right now.
Why is that any different than five years ago?
Because we have a large project that's possibly happening.
And we may have another large project a year from now. I understand what you're saying, but...
Make the call.
Things, things are growing, I mean, you, you can't say that in a year from now, that'll be done, and there won't be another big one here that you guys will be in the
I can't say that. I'm just, I'm looking at what we have right now in the works.
Now, I'd like to make a motion that we do RFPs for both engineer and planner. Uh, my recommendation is starting with planner first, and as soon as that's done, do engineer.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Turchi. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Set public hearing date for 2013, 2014 budget.
Make a motion that we set the public hearing for the 2013, 2014 budget as part of our regular scheduled meeting.
of our regularly scheduled meeting of June 3, 2013 at 7:30.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Turchi. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments? Any public comments at this time? No public comments? Motion by Trustee Turchi, supported by Clerk Keith. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.